Meeting to order for Monday, March the ninth. Approval of the agenda that the March ninth, twenty twenty committee of whole agenda meeting be adopted as presented. Moved second, all in favor, opposed, carried. Adoption of the medicine, the medicine committee of the whole meeting held February twenty six, twenty twenty be adopted as presented. Moved second, any errors or omissions? Hearing none, all is in favor, opposed, carried. Off to other pertinent business. Reserving supply policy, with director of finance. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Okay, for first up, the reserves and surplus policy. I first created it, I think something's four years ago now. So it was a brand new policy at the time. And changes that that I've made on it and updated for the review here in March twenty twenty are outlined in red. There's just a couple minor additions on page seven. And then following pages you'll see behind the description of each reserve, I put in a code number there. That's just a number that jives with my GL council, mean nothing to you folks, but reasonable change. So I thought I'd throw that in policy. Since the last policy reviewed, there's been a few additional reserves added. Four point eight, the D Sac reserve wasn't around back in twenty sixteen as another future expenditures reserve. Page eight, page nine, recently the station house reserve, and that's just the name I gave it for the time being because of the money that we received on that. And they created a transit reserve because the first year that we received the twenty five thousand dollar from Fraser Health. The idea being with that grant is that it's to offset our requisition that we tax the people by twenty five thousand. So for example, if if the regional district's requisition was two hundred and seventy five thousand, we still remit two seventy five thousand, but I only collect two hundred and fifty from the taxpayers. So that plus the twenty five grand is how that would would be handled annually, which we started doing the second year. But the first year was too late to do that, so I put the twenty five grand into a reserve. So if we ever need to say build some bus shelters or something like that, that's the money that everything that we can use for that. So it's a reserve that's not really getting increased unless that was council's desire, but there's twenty five thousand plus interest in it right now. So so that was the other reserve that I added to the policy. And again, so the next number of pages, I've just added my my reference number to them. And then if you go to the schedule or appendix A, basically the same reserve we just discussed were added, did you see that in red? My reference numbers are in there, and also I've updated the balances out of basically what they were four years ago versus December thirty versus twenty nineteen. So significant changes, we attributed amount, just on page fourteen. Community development regulatory reserve, we increased that up to forty thousand, and now help covering OCP reviews. We've still got a healthy gas tax reserve for paving projects on page fifteen. Three years ago, we started the D Sac reserve for upcoming capital projects. So we're now, that reserve few years ago was at zero, it's now almost eight hundred thousand. Fire department reserve will go down once we pay the balance of the fire truck this year. So it'll go down by about three hundred and seventy five thousand, but I'm still contributing fifty thousand every year to to for the next fire truck that we have to get down the road. Future expenditures reserve. That's available. Page sixteen, the biggest typical changes on this one. Our infrastructure replacement reserve a few years ago was about seven hundred and eighty thousand, we're now almost at three million. So we've been putting in our infrastructure levy amount plus last year budget revision, we added some more, so that's looking good. And then the vehicle, public works vehicle and equipment reserve, it's up to five hundred thousand since the last three, four years ago. Sewer reserves, not as healthy as we'd like it, but we're trying to build it up, but there's been a lot of sewer projects the last few years. And on the next page, page seventeen. Station house reserve, which I mentioned is brand new this year. Transit reserve, which I mentioned, and our water reserve is looking really good over the last three years, we've increased it about six hundred thousand. On the stat or DCCs, loan cost charges. It's up about half a million over the last review. The other reserves are basically increases with interest, a couple of small contributions, but they're basically increasing by interest annually. So that, there you have the updated reserve policy. For your consideration.
Counselor Erickson?
So I just have one question, the bridge unexpendable fund reserve, can we use that reserve for repairing and maintenance bridges?
It has to be capital nature.
It has to be a
It has to be bridge related. Those are the balance of funds when when the district borrows for the bridge. And the charter requires that if you borrow for a particular purpose and you don't spend all that money that you borrowed, it has to go towards the same kind of project, but it has to be capital.
So if we put a sidewalk on the side of the CN bridge and get the whistle stopped, would that go for that?
It'd be a capital upgrade, so you, yeah. As long as it's, as long as it's a capital improvement to a bridge, like if you're painting it or, you know, powder washing it, no. But if you're
Putting a sidewalk on the side or something?
Yeah. We'd have to be able to defend that, yeah.
We could add that to our conversation with CEO. We'll come to town shortly. Any other questions?
So I'm going to try to have this reviewed every once a year at this time of year, but
Want to thank you, Dale. Thank you, Dale, for doing this, this really helps. All of this stuff, trying to understand what's available.
Now, the next policy is super exciting.
All your departments exciting.
Tangible capital asset policy, this, I actually worked on over the last year, but thanks to Donna, it's coming before you tonight. But it was, it was a policy that was last developed in two thousand and eight, and back then there was major changes in public sector accounting for for assets. And the public public sector accounting board thrilled all of us accounts, I remember ten or twelve years ago with this. It was, it was a big change where the bottom line was that municipalities now like to show all their assets on their balance sheet. Before, before this section, everything got written off. So you hadn't, you didn't really know where your assets were. And that, that goes for villages all the way up to the city of P R. So it was quite a good change in our world. I remember going to a lot of seminars and workshops on this. And I had developed this policy, there's similar previous employment. And so I thought, I'm not going to be in the wheel, but I'll cater it to the different folks. So in this policy, you'll see a lot of stuff stricken out. And that is basically because there's references to dates of this, you know, starting January first, two thousand and nine. Well, that's all in the past, but it's mandatory, so we don't need to talk about dates of ten, twelve years ago. So those are, those are admitted. There's a lot of red, which are additions to the policy. I'm not going to go read them all out, but it's a little bit more descriptive for for our accounting of tangible capital assets. There's some additions like betterments, which is an accounting jargon for when you add value to an existing asset that actually extends the service life of the asset. So to give you an idea, we put a new group on this building, that would be a betterment, so it would be capitalized. But if you're painting the outside, that's not, that's just a regular maintenance item. So I have to look at it carefully to see, and also, also in the budget process, try to, you know, try to get them in the right category, whether it's a capital item or a maintenance item. So this policy helps distinguish whether it is a TCA. And then I get into adding some more values, definitions of values, fair value, net book value, residual value, useful life. Again, a lot of this is accounting jargon that I have to deal with, so pretty dry for the average reader. Not that I'm excited about it, but again, then again, it's a little bit more description on the various types of classifications, land, land improvements. Obviously, land's not amortized, no better parts or buildings. Category of construction in progress, so for example, the PCC plant, where we were working on that project over the last two and plus years, we just actually completed it in twenty nineteen, so it actually came on our books as an asset. Prior to that, because it was under construction and went into a category of construction in progress, so it wasn't amortized. So this year, we would start to amortize it because it's actually completed. So this gives you some descriptions of that. Then I go into machinery and equipment vehicles. I've tweaked the descriptions for engineered structures, which include roadways, water sewer systems, the drainage system. So it's a little bit more descriptive. And then there's a kind of a three stage thing, you've got the acquisition of your asset, where you then become the owner of that asset. And then it's amortized or it's useful life, and then it's disposed of. So that's kind of the cycle of a, of a TCA. Then I get into thresholds, and these are these are numbers that basically guidelines that I would use to determine whether we're going to capitalize an asset or not. So if we have something, say under machinery and equipment, if it's under five thousand, I'm just going to write it off to the operations budget. If it's over that, I'm going to capitalize it into the capital budget. So those numbers there on page twenty seven are basically thresholds, guidelines that I use to determine what, whether it's an O N M item or a capital item.
Is that discretionary, that five thousand, could it be six thousand, could it be four thousand, or is
I kind of, sometimes I just use my judgment depending on the kind of asset it is. If it's something I really want to track and if it's kind of a, there's a term for it's a good term, I can't remember, but it's kind of like a I don't know what should I think about, but anyways, it's kind of like, is that an asset that somebody really wants? That I want to keep track of, I don't want it to go missing, I'm going to capitalize it. And then what we tend to do too is when I go into thresholds, I talk about yeah, so I'm kind of on the bottom of page twenty seven, this is long term assets, not individually being thresholded, and it's about when purchased and volumes needs to limit, then I capitalize them. So again, it's a judgment call, if I'm just buying one computer nowadays, there's so, you know, ten years ago, you may be fifteen years ago, you're buying a computer for five grand, so you're going to capitalize it. Now, if I'm just buying one, probably it would just expensive, but if I had a I think with the tablets, for example, we bought a bunch of them, so the threshold went over it, so I capitalized those. So it's, it's a judgment call, and I think the word I was looking for was attractive items. So I tend to use a judgment call on that, if it's something that I want to make sure I've got in my, my inventory of assets that I don't want to see go missing, because I can look at it and go, where's this, where, you know, where'd it go, or whatever. So there is, there is some judgment involved in this process.
This is all borderline, now, regular business practices anyway, which is good to see. It's easier for us to manage as well.
But when the auditors come, it's, it's nice to have a set of stone policy. Then they know that we're, when they do their audit, they know that we're following a policy. And that's against, these practices are, are the pub, you know, following the public sector accounting board, but also government finance offices association best practices as well. So this isn't, we're no different than anybody else, and there may be some privilege or something, it's different. The whole chest of the TCAs is the same for each municipality. And then on page twenty nine, I just get into the types of amortization, and what's amortized, what's not. The half year rule, that kind of thing. Page thirty, I took that one and wrote out, everything else is spread out on various parts of the policy. And then section eleven there is just basically saying that we on our financial statements, we're going to show the various items in our, in our notes, usually the financial statements support the easier number of the balance sheet. And then appendix A is basically a list of all the types of assets and what I use as guidelines for how long to amortize them. Again, it's their estimated years for, for useful life, so again, keep in mind, this is all book value stuff, so we probably have lots of assets on our books that are net value of zero, but they're still functional assets, so and that's pretty much does the TCA about it.
Great, thank you for that update. Any other questions, counsel, staff? Good?
So these policies are come to the March ninth or twenty third, council, do you have the ready for adoption?
Letters of support policy. Are you speaking to this as Billy him or Heather, Counselor Stewart?
Counselor Stewart is the founder of this initiative.
Okay, go ahead, Heather.
So it's not as good as Dale's policy. It's not as good as Dale's policy. So this is my first attempt at a policy.
It's okay, go for it.
So the reason for bringing this forward is, as you can see through the purpose of the policy, is to bring everything into alignment so that it's all cohesive. People know exactly what they need to do, they need a letter of support, they know what the timeframe is, and they know the, the criteria for requesting a letter of support. I also was able to kind of structure a, an application that people could use. And basically, I'm bringing it forward to council for your input. I did send out an email to Counselor Dusty Smith, because he said he wouldn't be here, so I wanted his feedback. And the only thing he would like to see added would be that the district is notified if the grant is successful or unsuccessful. So he knew when to celebrate the successes that come with our letters of support, and I thought that was a really good idea as well. So I'm hoping for a feedback from council.
This has basically been the practice now, you just want to put it in policy?
I would love to have this policy, yes. Has there, was there an application process before as well, or was it just a phone call or
Comes by letter, usually by letter.
Mr. Mayor, yes, depending on the ask, so letters of support can be to support the acquisition of resources or money. It could be just moral support, it could be endorsement of a program, there are different ways. But normally, we're informed by a council, and then it comes either through a delegation, as you're aware, or it comes via a letter, which then is either circulated, and then the mayor, as has been the practice, can, depending on timeline, urgency, or the rest of it, decide, for example, on the nature of the request, to issue a letter, or it will come to council for further consideration. There's, there's flexibility in and out, that's not covered by policy. So to a large extent, Counselor Stewart, your, your initiative to bring a policy to this is political.
I stand by how I feel on this.
What, what the practice has been and what I followed was any, any obligation from council on a financial commitment, I came to council. If it's not any financial commitment, it's more my commitment and support, I just responded to the letter.
So if somebody were to come with the, assuming this policy is in place and the, and the jurors accept it, so then it would just become an agenda item, I would imagine.
Yes, it would have to be through council.
So, so the process would be, the application's filled out, staff puts it on the agenda, council makes their decision if they're going to endorse it. And then it would just come back to us with, and then a letter would be written with your signature. I would assume it's the process that
That's with a sense.
Yeah.
Well, I try.
So is the intent so that all letters of support, whether monetary or not, would follow this process?
It sounds like.
Well, this one here is the, for funding for grant applications specifically. But wouldn't it be nice if it did have the endorsement of council? And also, when people are applying for funding through, for a grant, I think that it needs some thought. I don't think it needs to be, oh, there's a grant available, I need a letter tomorrow. I, I really think that aligning it with our council strategic goals, so that we support initiatives that support our, the direction we're heading, I think that's important.
I also feel that as the mayor, I should have the authority to respond to an organization for support if it doesn't involve council's commitment or it doesn't involve any financial commitment. And I think I should be allowed to continue to do that for letters of support.
So you can put that in this policy under, under application? Right, where, no, I've currently, I've put in the C A O, and then I went, well, I wonder if that would work. But you could, you could put under the application process.
Yeah, so it's not for, if he's not looking for money or grants, it could be on the
We can add that into the policy, this is a draw.
I agree, so we'll note that.
One thing that, well, I just need clarification, is it an exception, an exemption from applying? Or you're saying apply?
We can apply to the, rather than to the C A O, just request of the mayor. And then at the place where it says no, where it says that
Rediciable?
Not all letters of council will be accepted, or for, what is it?
Just reserves, because if they're, if they're just looking for support and there's no funding, then they just put zero funding in that. Yeah, that one, so you know, it's just a
This is more for grant support?
Yeah.
Rather than letters, you still have the authority to write letters for everything else.
So will we then say call the secret letters of support pertaining to grant applications?
To funding or grants?
So what happens if the mayor writes a letter of support and council doesn't support it? If once we discuss it, that's what I'm wondering, is that what you're talking about?
It's me supporting something, not necessarily council supporting it.
Yeah, if you represent us.
Yeah, but if I distinctly separate the two in the letter.
But you represent us.
Right, well, I usually say
Mayor, council.
Mayor and council, or just mayor, mayor, you know, so
I'm, I'm just asking, I don't know what, I like the idea of putting in the district should be notified as a result, of the results. If, because the mayor should be notified, I like that to be there somewhere.
So is this, is this the result of my letter to founder?
No, this actually happened in a previous term as well, and I believe I, I emailed Don Gunningham and said, do we have policy on letters of support? This is not just something that just recently happened, although I did have a problem with that letter of support that I've spoken with you about earlier.
We did.
And continue to still have a problem, but I'm working on it. This was an ongoing thing in the previous term as well. It's, we set out strategic goals, a vision, we all get together, we decide, this is the direction we're going, and then zing, squirrel, we're off in another direction. I don't believe or feel that that letter of support is the direction that we talked about in our previous strategic plan. Maybe that's coming in the next one, but my concern is that I would like the district of hope, letters of support, to have the weight that I believe they have, and that isn't done by just, I, I think the application process gives it the weight and credibility that it deserves.
I think if you were to just retitle the the policy, you say district of hope, policy regarding the requesting of letters of support for funding applications.
There you go.
Yeah.
That's helpful.
Because then, then if somebody's just looking, you know, if they're not looking, if they're looking for moral support, then that doesn't go through anything.
It's out of his discretion.
And then the application wouldn't make sense either for a support.
No, no.
It's clearly for grant funding.
So then at least that, that channel would be, you know, they'd fill in the application, and then staff would bring it to council meeting for and report, some of this presence applied, here's their application. That's the way I see it, otherwise, otherwise, there's no need for a policy if it's not going to eventually come to the table.
And maybe that's the will of council, what I brought forward was a notice of motion so we could discuss whether a lot of policy was required. And then it was mentioned to put something together, write it to a committee of hold. But if it's the will of council, that they don't want to have policy on this, then that's fine too.
But personally, my own personal opinion on this is it'd be great to have this on file, because then you know what groups are applying for what grants.
And the O K.
So it's good reference stuff to have, and then again, I think the Counselors too, and actually Counselor Smith, I'm going to vote follow up for re-successful, because that, that's what it's all about, is
Don't forget, we already have our granting, now, the granting aid policy is separate.
That's totally different.
That's totally different too, so just as long as council understands that, we have our granting aid policy where we issue, I think we have ten thousand dollars a year that would give out a grant.
This is for
That's separate from what this would be.
This is more provincial and federal.
All right, thank you, good discussion on that as well.
So, Mr. Mayor, why don't we then, as staff, will go over, make the, the amendment, or recirculate the draft policy and prepare to come to council for further deliberation and ideally decision, if that's where council is at.
Sure. Bring that back by the twenty third?
Um, hopefully, we can fit that in, yeah.
She smiled. I hesitated little as I asked as well, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll aim for that, but that counts.
Okay, all right, appreciate that. There's a lot, I'm going, a lot coming, so.
Would you like to add another community of hope? Would you like to add another community of hope?
No, I think you can write that out, okay.
So, just to confirm, you may apply for a letter of support by email to, to you, to mayor?
No, it should go to, should go to staff, don't you think?
We'll, we'll circulate our, what we believe in the corrected version for your, you can comment before the next meeting or when it comes up, so if there are any discrepancies, we can sort that out concurrently in the background, so when it comes to the council, it's the version you're always expecting.
Some does now come directly to staff, some does come to me, and I give to staff, and we talk about, so it's back and forth.
Yeah, we need to build it, have it on a form, so that, for example, if staff are going to be the ones that receive it, you don't have to take them either email the policy back to the person who applied, or if they come in person, or...
It should be a staff person that funding applications go to, and then we channel them through appropriately, so we'll put...
Put the right person on that.
Correct, spread it off, and it's hand-delivered to the front counter for the staff.
Yeah, because it's something that, if, you know, once approved, we put it on the website, the applications or whatever, and...
We'll be able to policy that either way, I'd say.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Stewart. Anything else on that?
Thank you.
All right. Any call for questions from the public, for anything relevant to the agenda?
You might want to speak.
You know I would.